Yeah.
Okay, good evening. I'm calling the meeting to order at 5:36. Clerk, roll call please.
Good evening, Mayor Manchaca.
Here.
Vice Mayor Liao.
Here.
Councilmember Ding.
Here.
Councilmember Harrington.
Here.
Councilmember Pooh.
Present.
Okay, just a reminder, tonight's meeting is live streamed on Cable Channel 3 in our online platforms. Please email all public comments to cityclerk@sgch.org. No later than the time the item is considered by the council tonight. Comments received after items have been considered will not be read into the record. Agenda items and comments will be read by Assistant Clerk Marilyn Bonus for up to three minutes each. Clerk, next item, please.
Public comment. This time is set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on items on the agenda. Mayor, we have not received any public comments tonight.
Next agenda item, please.
The next item is interviews of applicants for city commissions. Applicants will be interviewed to fill vacant and expiring seats on the Civil Service, Community Service, Design Review, Historic Preservation and Cultural Resource, and Planning Commissions. Appointments are for two years with the exception of one vacancy, which will be appointed for one year.
Thank you. Council will have 15 minutes to interview each candidate. A 10-minute allotment has been added in between each candidate interview to prevent any overlaps. Assistant City Clerk will provide a five-minute warning before the 15 minutes is up. Just as a reminder, at this time, we don't have any applicants for the Civil Service Commission. Clerk, please introduce the first applicant.
The first applicant tonight is George Carney. He is an applicant for the Planning Commission.
Well, welcome, George Carney. Nice to have you here. First of all, I want to thank you for taking the initiative to serve, and I encourage you to continue with civic engagement in any capacity. I know you will. I appreciate having fresh views and new perspectives, and we really appreciate you being here. I just want to remind you to the candidates again that this interview is being livestreamed on Cable Channel 3, and we have a variety of other platforms. So we're going to begin the interview, and I will ask the first question. So, Mr. Carney, why are you interested in volunteering for this commission?
Thank you, Denise. Hi, everybody. There are really two or three reasons in no particular order. First, I have been a Civil Service Commissioner. I'm in my second term, as you know. Unfortunately, in that three years, I have had no opportunity at all to be a Civil Service Commissioner because nothing has happened. Maybe that's good, or maybe that's bad. I don't know. But more to the point, the Planning Commission interests me primarily because that's where the future of San Gabriel is. As you know, I'm a lifelong resident of this city. I have been engaged with the city in a number of capacities, starting as a business owner back in the 1970s and continuing up till now. I think on the Planning Commission, I can have, I can provide a lot of valuable input about what this city needs and where it's going to go, especially with the changed circumstances as a result of the coronavirus. So I think, given my background and my longtime engagement with the city, I can bring a voice to the Planning Commission that I think will add considerably to its ability to weigh projects.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lau.
Yes.
Would you like to pose a question?
Okay, so, George, yeah, I think you're doing a great job for a civil service committee, but have you any training background as, you know, a planning commissioner? Because it involves with engineering and architect, so I don't know if you have that kind of background.
No, Chen, I have no formal training in planning or engineering. I guess in my own defense, I can say I've been involved with the City Planning Commission and Building Commission because I built my own house from scratch. And believe me, when I say built, I mean everything from digging the foundation to, you know, doing the final paint job. And in that process, I did get involved with the city's building regulations and planning regulations. It gave me a new appreciation for the City Building Department, among other things. But more to the point, Chen, it's seeing what has gone on in San Gabriel over my lifetime there, seeing the developments that have come, those that have succeeded, a lot that have failed, looking at the vast stretches of empty land in San Gabriel that need to be developed, thinking of the economic potential for the city. I think that that would substitute for my lack of expertise in engineering specifically.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Pooh.
Thank you, Mayor, and hi, George. It's good to see you.
You too. I like the new look.
Thank you. It's a topic of, I'm going for John Wick by Halloween time. So, and you're looking well, and it's good to see that you and you're healthy. So that's first. Looking at your application, the one thing that really stood out for me is how you are the energy manager. You know, you were first energy manager here at S G U S D, helped get the installation of all the solar panels that we see at Gab and some of the, and at the district office, and now are doing so for Glendora and are heavily involved with their environmental issues, and I would imagine environmental sustainability. And I think that's a voice that we don't currently have on our planning commission, but it's also an area and an issue that's very near and dear to my heart as we look to the future. Hopefully, as, you know, these projects that are currently on the plate do get built, and other projects do come before us, you know, something that we can incorporate into our thinking. So I'd like you to be able to just maybe say a few words about your perspective on those things, and also how you would see bringing in environmental and environmental sustainability issues into the planning process.
Well, sure. Yes, as you know, or as you've seen, I have been an energy manager now for 13 years or 14 years, something like that, in two districts. I am, I guess I didn't start as a real advocate of clean environment, but watching this, doing this job for 14 years has certainly made me one. I pride myself, to be real, Frank, I pride myself on my expertise on clean energy alternatives. I see now with the solar installations we did in San Gabriel, things I wish I had done that we didn't do, things I have done in San Gabriel. I see a lot in San Gabriel, too, that we could do more in terms of environmental sustainability. For instance, I don't, excuse me, I don't see a lot of LED streetlights. I would like to see more. I would like to see projects, though, that come into San Gabriel, especially larger projects. I would like to see them, I won't say carbon neutral, but certainly green-friendly. And the technology that makes that possible, it's changing by the day. In just in my 14 years in this business, the price of solar has come down dramatically. The storage capabilities for solar, which is a huge part of any successful solar installation, has gone up. I'd like to see that be a part of our planning process and a part of our approval process for any large project. Try to be as environmentally sustainable as is reasonably possible, given the constraints of whatever the project might be. Yeah, I'm a real, I won't say fanatic, but I have certainly, I have certainly become stronger in my views on environmental sustainability. And I do think that is a big part of what we need to do. And I do bring whatever expertise I've acquired in doing this for two districts, I think I could bring to the city, and certainly to the commissioner.
And just very quickly, I mean, I assume in all those cases as well, it's saved money for the districts where you've been able to implement some of these strategies. Is that correct?
Absolutely. To give the most recent one, in Glendora, the last figures we have was before the pandemic hit, and we shut down the school district. But when I became energy manager in Glendora in the summer of 2015, the district was spending approximately $1.4 million a year on electricity. The most recent fiscal year, we spent $830,000 on electricity, without cutting any services or without closing anything down. It's very, very possible. I think frankly, although it's not a direct part of the Planning Commission's job, the city could do a lot along that line.
Okay, thank you, George, and go Bruins.
You saw, I wondered if you'd see the pen that.
I actually appreciate the background. Go Trojans. Councilmember Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor. George, I have a couple of questions that kind of are related. I just, first of all, I wanted to, I've seen you at a lot of council meetings. I wanted to get your view on the appropriate density and regarding mixed use for San Gabriel. What do you think we're going, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I say, along those lines, what, I'm sure you've seen some of the projects that have been coming up. They're pretty dense, especially the use of PUDs in mixed use, and what your view is on that.
I think that mixed-use projects are, is the future, frankly, for us and for a lot of other communities. I would, however, say that this coronavirus epidemic has got a lot of people thinking about what is appropriate density in mixed-use project, or in any project, actually. The only project I recall seeing personally that I would have had some reservations about was the one on San Gabriel Boulevard on the, was that on the east side? Can't remember what that was called, but at first blush, was it going to be five stories or something? It looked a little overly dense. I think it's been modified somewhat. And I think it was subsequently approved to everybody's satisfaction. I don't want to see San Gabriel turned into a valley of high-rises. I don't. But I do think that we're going to have to, we're going to have to move towards a more dense environment than we have right now. I don't know if what we have right now is sustainable. Again, though, given that that could change with the fallout of this environment, if it's a virus thing.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because that was kind of my follow-up question, because now that the numbers are coming out, something between 80% to 90% of of the cases in COVID have been in areas that are as dense or denser than San Gabriel. So if we're going that way, when we talk about sustainability, we have to think about health as well. So is it a healthy living style to be, you know, packed in like that? And especially when we're doing mixed use, where we're putting basically living space above zoning that was traditionally commercial. So now we've cross-pollinated, for example, those two areas. So if we have a shutdown and they, and you're sheltering in place, you're actually above a commercial area. So we, to me, I just wanted to see if COVID had changed your mind on any of that.
I won't say it's changed my mind. It certainly, though, I have a very good friend who lives in Manhattan, well, a former student. I was talking to him not too long ago about the difficulties of sheltering in place when you live in a two-bedroom apartment on the 19th floor of a 30-some-story building. It gave me a different perspective about density. I mean, obviously, we're not going to get to that point in San Gabriel, but you're right. It's, I don't think we want to get any more dense than we are in the mixed use. I think it's here, and I think it just has to be managed well. I don't think we can go back from mixed-use projects. There's too many of them here already, actually.
Well, I mean, I think the things that I was talking about when I was talking about the planned unit developments, the PUDs, they actually go significantly above what the zoning would otherwise allow, even mixed use. They, basically, if you're over an acre, you can go above what our zoning would allow.
Right, right, yeah.
And so that's where I get into the area. Are the long-term trade-offs, like some short-term gains to the city, valuable when you look at the totality of it? And that's kind of why I like your experience as an energy manager. You're balancing things all the time, you know, what's the payoff? What's the return on this? How long does it take until it pays off? That type of analysis would be very important on something like that.
Well, thank, I think it is, John. I think everything is a trade-off. Everything you're doing, whether it's in energy management or whether it's in building and development, you are making trade-offs.
Yeah.
I think that making wise trade-offs is, and I'm not claiming any special wisdom, believe me, but I think I've done enough of this type of thing to be able to balance competing forces. Certainly in the energy field, I have, and I think the same, the same skills would come into trading off in approving or disproving a development. So basically, as I say, yes, I tend to be in favor of mixed use. I do, I would look a lot more carefully at developments, heavy, very dense developments from this point on, at least until they have a vaccine for this virus.
Great, thank you.
Mayor, there's five minutes before the next interview.
Councilmember Ding.
Yeah, hi, George.
Hi, Tony. How you doing?
Yeah, okay. And see you again, okay.
Nice to see you, sir.
Okay, and the question is, do you see any, like, long-range vision for the city of San Gabriel?
I know that we have two plans that have to be updated. The residential plan and the general plan. I know the general plan, the last time it was updated, I think it was 2005 or '06 or something like that. It's long overdue. I think, and then the residential plan, I think is not as overdue, but needs to be done. I think certainly you have to do long-term planning. I do not think San Gabriel's character will change a lot. It will change some, but I think San Gabriel is still going to be primarily a residential community, a very nice residential community, and I don't want that to change either. As you know, I've lived here 52 years. I've raised my kids here. I've owned my home here. I don't want to see it change to something it's not, but the times, as Bob Dylan said, the times they are a-changing, and we're going to have to kind of get with that. We're going to have to realize that this is not 1955 anymore, much as I might like it to be. So, but yeah, I think that, basically, the city's general plan, I think that's probably the biggest job that is ahead of, in terms of planning. And I also think that we'll have to wait until there's a permanent new planning commissioner, or planning director hired.
Okay, the next question is regarding the our Mission District.
Could you make it short, please, because we're running out of time. It's one question per council, but go ahead, Tony.
Okay, Mission District, the long-term plan. Did you have any idea?
I could be very skeptical here, Tony, and say that since I was involved with the Chamber of Commerce in the 1970s, there's been a plan for the Mission District. I would like to see the Mission District developed. I think we made a large step in the right direction with the food hall that I hope will still be opening once the restrictions from the virus have gone away. I think there are bigger questions, though. Parking is a big part of that. I think the development up on the corner of Los Tunas and Mission, that they're just completing now, is a big part of that. It'll be a nice addition to that revitalization. Yeah, the Mission District needs to have, it needs to be more developed than it is because there needs to be a place for San Gabriel people, especially San Gabriel kids, to go. And I would, that's something I would really like to see. I don't want to take my money to Pasadena every time I want to go out, but I do most of the time.
Okay, thank you, George.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Tony. I mean, Councilmember Ding. Okay, so that concludes our interview, and we're going to recess until the next scheduled interview. But thank you so much, George Carney, for taking the time, and, you know, we will get back to you as soon as we make a decision.
Thank you, Denise. Thank you all. Nice talking to you.
Thank you, George.
Bye-bye.
Now.
Good evening, Mayor. The next applicant is Mark Juarez. He is an applicant for the Planning Commission.
Great. Welcome, Mark. Nice to see you again. First of all, I wanted to thank you for taking the initiative to serve and to apply. I know you've served on the Historical Commission, but now you're interested in the Planning Commission. Before we begin with the questioning, I wanted to remind you that tonight's meeting is livestreamed on Cable Channel 3 in our online platforms also. So before we begin with the questions, I just wanted to make sure, as I went through, I wasn't sure. And I see, I hear an echo, so hopefully, can you understand me, Mark? You have your mute button on. I can't hear you.
There you go. It's, your voice is getting chopped up a little bit.
Okay.
I got just what you're saying.
Great. I just wanted to clarify something on your application. If for some reason we do not appoint you for the Planning Commission, are you interested in returning to the Historical Commission?
Um, that would really depend. Um, that would really depend. Um, I feel my skills and background. Um, actually, even though I teach history, um, and I teach psychology and so forth, um, my skills and background are better suited to the Planning Commission, but I would still be willing to serve in, in some capacity, yeah. I mean, if there are other candidates who are more qualified than, than I am for the uh Historical and Cultural Commission, then then I would, I would defer to them, you know. I mean, that's your choice, not mine.
Well, no, the, the reason I'm asking is because your term expires also. So I, I wanted to make sure that, you know, we heard it directly from you, the council hears from you, that if, if um it doesn't work out with the Planning Commission, you are interested in really reapplying to the Historical Commission. Because we have to make those decisions tonight.
I, I'd like to, to help the, the community and I just felt that I would be more helping on the um Planning Commission than the Cultural and Historical Commission.
Okay, but, but you are interested in returning if it works out. Okay, great. I just want to get confirmation. Um, so I'll just ask you the first question. Um, why are you interested in now serving for the Planning Commission?
Well, uh, well, the first one I, I just stated is that, that my skills are in terms of uh, my past experience, eight years on the Planet Commission in Alhambra. Um, uh, master's level, real estate, law courses, real estate, uh, market analysis, real estate appraisal courses, these all come to bear when you have applicants and just knowing the issues and and knowing the, the concepts at work. And then um, I, I remember um one, in one of our, one of our many meetings in, in Alhambra, I don't know if you know Scott Lee, the, the plant, one of the planners there, he made a comment about one of my skills that I hadn't really considered. He said, uh, Commissioner Juarez knows the concepts upon which things like housing density and FARs and so forth are based. And I hadn't thought about it, but, but in my undergraduate degree, I did learn those things. Like, why does density matter? Well, you have, high density means more police calls, more emergency calls, uh, more stress on the infrastructure and so on and so forth. So, so that, that um, is the primary reasons that I just, it just felt like a, a, a better fit. And I want to, you know, I've been here in one capacity or another in the city for fifty-two years and I want to help the community in any way really that I'm able to. Um, you know, I still live here, obviously, and I teach, well, actually, typically, I still teach in San Gabriel. Even though it's at San Gabriel High School, those first hundred and fifty feet are still San Gabriel.
That's right. Okay, thank you, Mark. Uh, Councilmember Pooh.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, hi, Mark. It's good to see you. Are you staying, uh, you and your family healthy, you know?
So far, knocking on everybody's house, yeah, thank you.
Good, glad to hear it. Yes, thank you. Um, the thing that really piqued my interest about your background is your service for eight years on the Alhambra Planning Commission. Can you first tell us what years uh you served on that commission for?
It was, and I'm not, it's not entirely clear because the, the day of the appointment and the dates of service are, are slightly different. But approximately ninety, try eighty-nine to ninety-seven, yeah.
Eighty-nine to ninety-seven?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. And then, you know, perhaps what sort of perspectives or lessons learned could you perhaps uh share from that experience and, and then bring to our planning commission? I know it's a broad question, but, but I think we oftentimes look at the city of Alhambra and our, our other surrounding communities um for comparison, sometimes as competition so forth and so on, but uh I think that uh it would be interesting to hear from you what you think you've learned the most that would be the most valuable thing to uh bring uh to the San Gabriel Planning Commission.
Okay, um, I hear someone saying that they're muted. Should I wait?
No, you're, you're, you're good, please.
Okay, um, I would say one of the biggest lessons I learned there is that it's not as simple as redrawing, you know, things on a map. Um, you've got to, it's very political. Um, you need to get people involved and, and, and let everyone have their say, have their, their input. Um, but I think the other thing that I would say I've learned there is that um things that sometimes seem very difficult, complex, um, are still very doable. Um, if people, you know, put their minds to it, if they show patience, uh, they don't try to ram things down people's throats and so forth, and realize we're dealing with people and we're dealing with their homes and their community. And uh, I think that, that knowledge, if that knowledge guides the process, I think um, just about, just about it, maybe not anything, but just about anything is, is doable.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mark, I, I liked your response that, or your statement that you understand density um, and that you were already on a planning commission previously. Now, um, obviously, Alhambra and San Gabriel are different, even though we're neighbors. But what do you think about the current state of San Gabriel's density and whether we're going the right direction? Or whether you think we are too dense, not dense enough? Like, what are your views on that?
Well, it's interesting because I see San Gabriel in terms of density, in terms of the issues that it's facing right now, kind of where Alhambra was back when I served there. And that is, there are some decisions to be made, I think, that will affect housing density and ultimately the population of the city. In, in Alhambra, I think when I started, the population was just over sixty thousand and projected build-out was going to be a hundred and twenty thousand, almost double of what it was. And so we said, hey, you know, we've got to do something about that, the, the city uh, infrastructure, the services won't be able to handle that. So, I, I think, and we, we, what we did is we looked at the zoning, we looked at, you know, housing units and how many people were per housing unit and, and adjusted the zoning so that a maximum build-out would be significantly less than a hundred and twenty thousand. So I, I think San Gabriel, if, it, it's a simple mathematical exercise if you want to project the, the population and San Gabriel, I think, needs to maybe look at result, perhaps rezoning some areas, perhaps. Um, I know, I, I had a feeling I was going to be questioned like this. Um, perhaps rezoning some areas, um, perhaps downzoning some areas, uh, perhaps upzoning some areas where it's already densely populated, might as well formalize it and, and get some uh, low income, there's the low-income housing unit issue and so forth. I was looking at the zoning map while I was waiting and then you have those, we have those pockets. I've always wondered about those pockets of county area that are completely surrounded by San Gabriel uh territory. So I, I don't, I don't know what if there are any kind of opportunities that are there also, so.
And then one just quick follow-up on that, on, in light of the COVID pandemic and the fact that eighty to ninety-five percent of all infections have happened in mid to high density, does that change your mind on density at all?
Well, uh, it, well, no, not, no, I mean, density, you know, I have to teach uh, it's interesting enough, I have to teach that density is a primary factor in infection rates. Um, all, all diseases, and I have to teach about mental illness when I teach psychology. All infection-related mental illnesses are higher in high-density areas. They're highest in the city, they're middle ground in the suburbs, and they're lowest in rural areas. So that would be an issue to consider also, the, the more density we have in the city, the more burden, if you will, will be put on, on medical infrastructure, on uh, fire, you know, rescue paramedics and, and the like. So, yeah, it's all, it's all intertwined, it's all connected, it's not a single issue. But density generally, if I had to, if I have to make a simplistic statement, which is not simplistic, but a simple statement would be, higher density tends to lower quality of life. You can do high density well, but it's not cheap and it's not easy.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dane.
Yes, hi, Mark.
Hello.
Hello, yeah, okay, so I the, for, for the, this is a planning commissioner, so uh, did you have any like uh uh, your vision for our long-term plan for the San Gabriel City?
Um, I mean, again, not being, having inside information, just what I get from reading the city update, you know, on your, your app and I get the one that comes to the uh, into the mail, in my mailbox and so forth. Um, you know, there, there's the issue, the financial issues and so forth. And so I would think that, you know, building the, the um economic base, building uh, tax generating types of infrastructure, types of businesses, types of structures that will bring our revenue generating business of, of various types to the city would be, uh, would be important. Yeah, there's one, you know, sometimes people will put economic development at odds with quality of life. You know, the, the residents are, would clamor for quality of life and the, the business interests would clamor for, you know, more, more, let's say, business-friendly uh legislation or, or municipal codes and so forth. And really, you have to, you need to, you have to have both. You have to have both. You have to have business friendly um uh, environment, because that's what generates tax revenues. That's what benefits the citizens and produces uh, a better quality of life and, and so forth. On the other hand, you can't, uh, you know, you know, totally wipe out every regulation just to make it easy for business. There has to be a middle ground for both. So I would say, to, to summarize, I would say building the economic base and striking a middle ground that serves both the, the interests of, of business and of the residents in terms of quality of life.
Okay, thank you. And the second question, how do you, like, if just in case of the new development, so how do we think about the, like, for the affordable housing for the young pa- parents, the developer? Affordable, I think.
I'm sorry, that, the, the sound, the audio cut out about half of that.
It's uh, like, uh, for the affordable housing, for the uh, young uh couple, because uh, you know, right now that the, we are market price higher, right? How they help them to, like, they, if, hopefully, they still stay, stay with our San Gabriel City, you know, but also I, I think the state have the long-term plan to uh have the, the affordable housing for our local city too, you know.
Are you referring to the new codes regarding accessory dwelling units?
And it's overall, the, the, the long-term, the division, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I mean, okay, that's, that's one area. I know the state has, has changed the, the um, they really made it very difficult if, if any municipality wishes to make it difficult to build accessory dwelling units, granny flats, whatever you want to call it. And be in part because there is so little affordable housing or housing of any type, for that matter, um, available compared to the demand. So, there, that's one, okay, there's one of those things where, you know, you've got to balance it out. I mean, do you want to have accessory dwelling units in every R1 property in the city? Um, I, I, I'm going to guess, I'm going to go out on a limb here and say probably not.
Hello?
Uh, Mark, we're having, oh.
I'm going to have, you want to, and, and then the people, as you said, or an upper couple, because there's nothing portable. Oh, I thought someone was uh saying that. So I, I think that's one way to address housing affordabilities with accessory dwelling units. It done, done in a, a moderate way, not, not everywhere. I don't think they belong everywhere, but I think there are some places where they would be appropriate. So I, I would, and I would, I'm sure there are other ways too that I'm not aware of that, that I would be supporting because it's very difficult. I have three, well, my son just turned thirty, so I have two children in their twenties and, you know, they want to be able to build a, buy a house too, or some kind of dwelling in it, and so definitely, I'm definitely for increasing affordability. But in a quality way, in a quality way.
Okay, thank you.
And finally, Vice Mayor Lal.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Hi, Mark. Hi, so I'm so happy that someone been working uh for fifty, for so long. Uh, so I guess in the eighties, the uh, Alhambra is this redevelopment agency. Were you involved with that agency at all?
Okay, this, the, again, the sound was breaking up a little bit. Are you asking me, was I involved with the redevelopment agency in Alhambra?
Yes, I, you know, start on Chappell Main. And uh, next question is, you know, if you look at the main street right now, you know, there's several uh, high-rise mixed-use projects uh between, I would say, Garfield and maybe uh, what's the next street? Anyway, there are four or five uh mixed shoe projects. And it's a, I bring in a lot of businesses and also residents. Um, but some people like it, some people hate it. So, what's your opinion of this, you know, uh development of the uh housing project on Main Street in Alhambra? And can that be applied to city of San Gabriel?
Okay, so to your first question, I did not work or participate in the redevelopment agency. The redevelopment agency was a separate body comprised of the city council itself. So there were two bodies by the same people. We would have joint meetings with them occasionally. And with regard to the development you are talking about on Main Street, um, we did have joint meetings with the city council and being the same people, the redevelopment agency. I think what you're referring to there is an example of what I was talking about earlier. Well, that's, that's my computer, sorry about that. Um, in that, I remember at the time, in the, in the, in the conferences we would go to in Monterey, every other year, they would send us commissioners and city staff to the, uh, I think it was the League of California Cities Conference in Monterey. Is it that, or I think it was League of California Cities or SCAG, I can't. In any event, um, they were talking about nodes. They, they, they talked about like Val, Garfield and Main was a node and Atlantic and Main was a node and Fremont and Main, these nodes that should be built up. And making walkable communities so you could have people who lived and maybe even worked in the same building. Um, kind of a downsized, miniaturized New York style kind of thing where people aren't necessarily driving everywhere they go. They, they can walk to where they're going. So I think in that sense, that type of development um, is good because it's taking cars off the street. It's, it's making for a more um a less car-centric lifestyle. I know there were those of us on the Planet Commission and other uh bodies that participated that were not in favor of putting high-rises on every node. Every Fremont and Main, Atlantic and Main, Garfield and Main. So again, through the process of getting everyone's input, through the process of involving the, the public in their input, they, they got what you have now. You have the development in a very focused area between Garfield and Main and Atlantic and Main. And I think, I think for that area, I think it, it works. Um, and perhaps San Gabriel could benefit from something like that. I, I don't know what the council's preferences are. Um, but it might be a way to generate more, more property tax and sales tax revenues without, you know, destroying the, the the smaller suburban feel of San Gabriel.
Mayor, there's five minutes left until the next interview.
Vice Mayor, did that answer your question?
Uh, yes, I, yeah, I feel exactly the same way you feel. Okay, thank you, Mark.
Okay, great. Well, then that concludes the interview and we have another interview scheduled shortly at six-twenty. But again, Mark, thank you so much for, for joining us and uh, you know, being so flexible with this teleconferencing that we, we now have to um, go through to keep everyone safe and do my best to, to the whole family and all your go through to keep everyone safe and give my best to the whole family and all your kids.
Thank you, so for you.
Okay, bye bye.
Now.
Good evening, Mayor. The next interviewee is Kyle DeBryant. He is the applicant for the Historical Preservation and Cultural Resource Commission.
Great. Well, welcome again, Kyle. Thank you for joining us today. I wanted to thank you for taking the initiative to serve on a commission. And, you know, regardless of what happens, you know, we we hope you continue with your civic engagement and in any capacity. We have lots of opportunities also. I just wanted to remind you that tonight's meeting is live streamed on cable channel three and we have other online platforms. So if you hear yourself on channel three, you know why this is being taped. So I'm going to begin by just asking you why you're interested in volunteering for this commission.
You know, I've always had a, I've always had an interest in history and preserving history and you know, this city is definitely has a lot of history for sure. I've always been interested in the, you know, just as a, just as a microcosm of the city of the Mission District and you know, all of the the history that is that is there. Just in that small little area there, there's so much that that is there. That's just kind of the interest that I had. So when I was asked, or I was told about this commission. It piqued my interest for sure because I believe that we, you know, as a city, as we start to develop and as we start to grow, I would love to see or have a say or a place at the table for discussions about how do you, how do you develop smartly and also be able to preserve the city and the look of the city and what the city is all about. And so that was that was the main reason why I wanted to do it.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor. So Kyle, I wanted to ask you regarding historic preservation. You know, we have several distinct neighborhoods in San Gabriel. It's a pretty major project categorizing them and cataloging them and kind of drawing the boundaries. Do you have any experience in a project of that type either as a participant or even as like a decision maker?
No, not at that level of going through and cataloging that, but I you know, my current job as far as being able to handle a lot of work and a ton of work, I work for a major media firm managing quite, you know, I'm managing budgets and and those sorts of things. And so I am very well adept at handling, you know, many tasks at one time and a lot of work and a cumulative amount of work. But as far as the, as far as all of the details and the codes and all of that stuff, no, I don't, I don't have experience in that sort of thing.
Okay, then one other quick question. If you had to choose one either building or structure or something in San Gabriel as kind of a highlight of the city, what would you choose if someone that didn't know our city?
The Playhouse, for sure.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Dean.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Kyle. Okay, the yeah, my question is, yeah, but especially our Mission District, okay, how do you use the relationship between the historical preservation, planning and economic development?
Sorry, could you, could you repeat the question? I'm sorry, I didn't hear all of it.
Okay, the, how do you see the relationship between the historical preservation, planning and economic development?
I see them working together for smart development. That the, I understand that there is, in these preservation groups, there always seems to be a conflict between developing and economic growth and what may be perceived as the expense of preserving the historical, the historical values of of the buildings and that those two can't live in a symbiotic relationship for sure. That's, I think that's a misnomer. I think that working together and increasing smart development and looking at the buildings that are already existing and seeing how those, how those buildings fit into the plan overall. And making sure that the area that is there already preexisting in the Mission District, for instance, is big, is able to be preserved, is able to have the preserve the look that it maintains now. And if that requires new buildings and things like that being established or being built down there, that those buildings are, at least in some measure, match the, match the look of that of that area down there. So I mean, I grew up in Santa Fe, New Mexico. And I grew up, I'm sorry, I went to school in Santa Fe, New Mexico, and they have a downtown area there that does it very, very well. You know, it is, it preserves the historical, the historical area. And there are limits to what you can build down there, what you can do down there, and the place is packed. You know, all the time and everybody wants to go there and it's a huge draw. So I think that when it comes to economics, economic planning, and I think when it comes to preservation of those areas, I don't think that they have to be in opposition. I think that there are many, many ways to develop and keep those those two groups working together for sure.
Thank you, Kyle. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Vice Mayor Lau.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Hi, Kyle. How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Hi, good, good. And I have some sort of a question you mentioned in Mexico. I was in San Antonio, Texas for National Week of Cities Conference. And I visited Allamal and they just received $100 million for their renovation. And of course, you know, Allamal attract millions and millions of visitors every year. So I agree, you know, we couldn't use our Mission Playhouse and actually our, the whole Mission District to attract tours and also to bring in revenue. But one thing we're, we're lacking is we need someone like you who is from Hollywood can promote our Mission Playhouse. So do you think you can do that kind of work and try to get a grant from federal government or California, you know, state grants to help renovate our Mission Playhouse?
Well, that's not my, to answer that, I can't really answer that because I don't know. I'm not in that capacity at the at the firm that I that I work for. And, you know, I work for a a firm that does definitely do charitable works and things like that, but it's more limited to industry-related, you know, industry-related, media industry-related charitable organization. So I don't think that that is, that is truthfully a possibility. And I don't know if I have the kind of influence that you're talking about. I don't know if I, if I have that. So to answer your question, quite frankly, that would not be the reason why I would be on the on the commission because of that. I just, that's not the capacity I serve at the at the company that I work for.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you for being so honest. But, you know, you already did a great job for SAP. You know, you and your wife, very involved with our education, so, yeah. Thank you, but you want to step up for this commission?
Thank you. To answer, I, outside of my job relationship, I have, as far as the Mission District goes, for instance, with the Wurlitzer piano, I read Wurlitzer organ, the silent movie, you know, the silent movies that they show there. I do have connections in those areas for people who are what we call cinephiles, who love to present those old movies and things like that, who would love opportunities to to project and show their, the artwork that they do and the those old films from the 1920s and everything else that are accompanied by those organs. And I've had those discussions with these people before about, you know, the opportunities for those. Those are the things I feel like I could help to preserve, or not to preserve, but to promote those areas. I do have connections in that way that I think are that would benefit those areas and show, be able to show something that has that historical value by presenting things of historical value. So, you know, so there is, there is that possibility as well.
Well, that's, that's good enough. Actually, I think the silent movies who attract thousands of people from LA, you know, just to come Sunday afternoon to hear the Orkin play and watch the, you know, the movies in earlier than 1910. So it's, it's great that you have that kind of connection. Yeah, we appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Kyle, I just want to say thank you for your honesty. Really appreciate that. And I think you're a new resource for us. So we'll be tapping on your shoulder one way or another, but but thank you for sharing that information. Finally, Councilmember Pooh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hi, Kyle, it's good to see you. How's the family?
Good, good. Thank you. Good to hear from you as well.
Yeah, I think you're being voluntold to produce a 10-part docu-series on Netflix or San Gabriel, you know, how LA County was settled, something like that. So I guess, you know, first of all, just curious, who initially sort of got you interested and approached you about joining this commission?
You know, I have heard that, you know, I knew that the commission was out there and there was working and that Senia Lubisic was one person who who asked me to be part of this and Beatrice as well. And so those two I've had a connection with here in the, in the city for quite some time. And so, you know, they said that there was an opening. I, you know, I thought that this would be an opportunity for me to, you know, to take a stab at it, really. So, so I really just wanted to you know, see what was possible, right? So that's, those are the two people who inquired to me about this.
Great, thanks. Thanks for your willingness to serve. And, you know, you've already spoken a bit about this, but I've always said and believed that the past and the future are not mutually exclusive. We just need to be able to take care of both in the present. And you mentioned areas like Santa Fe's downtown. I can think of other towns in in California that also have historic districts that is also a thriving commercial center and a draw for people from all over. So I guess I wanted to meld this with the, with the, you know, you're probably aware that we do have a Mission District specific plan that does have specific regulations about design and so forth within the Mission District. And but I guess what I'm curious about is you may not know like all the details about what's in the Mission District specific plan, but would you we've had it now for I want to say something like 15 years and and the Mission District has remained more or less the same. Would you be in favor of looking, relooking at the Mission District specific plan so that we could try to maybe achieve that kind of better balance between between, or not even a balance, but even maybe leveraging and utilizing our history and our culture to be able to attract the kind of commercial activity that the entire community would would like like and appreciate?
Sure, I think that those, those are, again, it's that, it's that mutually exclusive component, you know, that you're talking about that it's not. There is there is bad development and then there's, there's good development, right? And how do you, how do you where do you find that, that happy medium where the development that is that's going in there is going to serve the community and not be say shackled or, you know, locked down to you know, to the the history of 100 years ago or 200 years ago, right? So but what is that, what is that spot that we can all just agree that we're going to be able to preserve that and not dilute what's there? And that might be finding an area, you know, that maybe a high-density apartment complex may not be the, that may not be the right thing, right? But what is the next best thing for that that still preserves that? And and how do you, how do you maintain the the uniqueness of it without, without diluting, diluting the history? And I think that that's the key. And that truthfully comes down to everybody sitting in a room and and discussing and and having good, open debates about it and coming up with those, those solutions within there. It's not easy. I don't think all of the time. I think that there's a lot of emotions on both sides of that. And I think if you remove that emotional level of it and you really see what is, what is truly important to maintain the city, preserve, maintain, you know, the city's growth and preserve its history and finding that that happy medium is really, really important. And I just, I just feel that Mission District has so much to offer. And it's going to take some time to really figure out what that is, but I would love to be a part of helping helping find out what that is.
Sure. Great, thank you, Kyle. And say hi to everybody.
So apparently we still have some time, so I want to ask a question, Kyle. A second question, actually, I guess. If there was one place in San Gabriel that you would want the commission to focus on, what place would that be and what would you like us to do better to to preserve it?
You know, there's one area that, and what it's called is, it's, I know, I'm sorry. The San Gabriel Village is an area that I drive through every once in a while when I'm taking my daughter to school at or, you know, through there. And that's an area that I just, every time I look through there, I'm like, this is a, this is a place that's kind of locked in time, right? That that to me, I would think would be a huge challenge in a good way, a challenge like, what do you do with this area? That's kind of like in this small, out-of-the-way place, not everybody knows that it's there, right? But it's got that quaint. Like, you know, it just looks like when you drive through, I'm like, oh, I've taken a step back in time here and would love to see something done over there, too. So if you're, it's an area that is kind of has a historical value that is kind of kind of untouched right now and, and again, has a lot of potential, I would say that would be my one of the areas I would really like to see focused on.
Great. Well, thank you again for your time, Kyle. Really appreciate it. This concludes our interview and we will get back to you. And, you know, say hello to your wife and, you know, wishing your family good health and, you know, hang in there. I'll see you in the streets.
That's right.
From each other.
I know, I know.
Drive by all the time.
Well, thank you, everybody, and everybody be safe and, you know, we'll, we'll get through all of this at some point and we'll all be better for it, I hope. So thanks again for everybody.
Thanks, Kyle.
Yeah, all right, bye bye.
Now.
Mayor, the next interviewee is Robert Martinez. He is an applicant for the Historical Preservation and Cultural Resource Commission.
Well, first of all, Robert, welcome. Thank you for taking an interest in our in this commission and for wanting to be civically engaged. I haven't met you before, but I really do appreciate the time that you're taking tonight. As you know, everything's teleconference team, so I just wanted to remind you that this meeting, that the audio is being live streamed on Channel Three, Cable Channel Three, and we also have other online platforms. And so I want I'll be asking the first questions, and then I I will go to my colleagues and they will each ask one or two questions of you tonight. So let's begin. First of all, can you share with us what interests you about this this commission? Why do you want to volunteer your time?
I have I have an interest in it. Just I've always had an interest in historical, you know, buildings and sites and stuff like that, and cultural sites. And as as I get older, I just I'm forty-six now, and the it's more appealing to me to be to to volunteer and be more civically minded. And and I just, with everything going on right now, it just seems like a good time to do it.
Okay, well, thank you. Councilmember Dean, can you please ask your questions?
Hi, Robert.
Hello.
Hello. Yeah, okay. What do you have any like experience and knowledge can bring to our commission?
Well, the only relevant sort of experience that I've had that's sort of similar is that I did sit on the board of a nonprofit community medical center in downtown Los Angeles for a few years. And it seems like it was kind of, I I don't know exactly how this all works out, but it seems like it might be sort of similar in that we meet periodically, we vote on things that are relevant to to what we're discussing and all that. But I have a background in art. I've had a I have a small business that deals with vintage clothing and furniture and art. And so I just have a an appreciation for history and culture.
Okay. Thank you. So do you have any like vision? Wait, if we're talking about talking, it's mostly talking about our Mission District. Do you have any vision on it?
It'd be it'd be nice to keep it as it is. I don't know. Honestly, I have to think about that. I I don't necessarily have a vision for any change or anything for the area.
Okay. Thank you, Robert.
Vice Mayor Lau?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Robert. Hi, I'm happy that you are quite of a art major. So you have your artistic eyes. So you look at all the historical buildings in, you know, historical San Gabriel. Which building appeals you the most? You know, which building you think is the most beautiful historical building? I would say landmark, but, you know, maybe a small building that has that special artistic appealing to you.
Let's see. I know this isn't San Gabriel, but there's a what immediately comes to mind is the Old Mill in San Marino.
Oh, okay.
But as far as San Gabriel, I'm in the Mission, obviously. There's a building that's right across the street from Burger King on Main Street. It's like a there's a florist in there, and it's just this old building. I always walk by it. I go to LA Fitness right there on the on Main Street, and I always walk by that building, and I just, something about it appeals to me. I just.
Is that the the church that you're talking about?
There's a florist in there. There might be a church also. Oh, no, the church is next.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I know that building. Okay, by the way, it's in El Hembra. Yeah, it's called the Fuentes Center. Yeah, it's a Spanish building. Yeah, I know that building, but it's it's outside of San Gabriel.
Okay, yeah, I love the Spanish style of our architecture.
Well, then what about the grapevine, you know, right on the corner of Santa Rita and Mission Drive? Have you been there? Right next to Playhouse?
Grapevine. I know I've seen it. I'm sorry, I don't know exactly where it's at.
Okay.
I live right down the street from Lugo Park and.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I also like the there's a little like area right there on, I forget the, it's a nice little area with the commercial buildings and it's it's really old. I really appreciate that area as well. I forget the name of the street. I'm sorry.
Okay, okay, I know where the, okay, thank you, Robert. Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Pooh?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Robert, for being willing to serve on this commission and for taking the time to interview with us. I guess I wanted to probe a little bit about how much do you know about the work of the commission, the current status of where it is and and the process and what its agenda is or the tasks that it needs to accomplish, you know, in the sort of immediate future?
I I know very little. I I did look on the website at some of the past meetings. So I don't know exactly what the commission is looking to do this year or anything like that. And I'm an open book. I'm, you know, I'm willing to learn and.
That's okay.
You know, this is completely.
No, I mean, you know, any community is about the community members' willingness to serve and just to make the the community a better place. You know, I think that's a motivator for all of us who are here on the council and even among and among the staff as well as, you know, trying to leave a better place than than what came before. And so I'm curious, you live down the street from San Gabriel High School. Do you know the adobe that's across the street from San Gabriel High School?
I I've seen it. I don't really know too much about it.
Okay. Yeah, I'm also fascinated by your background in painting and art in your running your own e-commerce business and vintage clothing, furniture, art, and collectibles. Any particular area or particular cultural, you know, source or, you know, any particular genre, I guess, from for your business?
Well, as far as like, like what I sell, I sell just whatever I can find that I can make money on. But as far as like myself, like what I like, my background is I'm mixed, a half Mexican, quarter Japanese, quarter Irish German. So I like Japanese things. I also I collect Mexican masks, Latin American masks. So I have a really eclectic taste in in things.
That's a I think it's a pretty good business model, though, trying to sell things that you can make money on. That's, I think that's a winner. I'm going to steal that from you, if you don't mind.
I I'm happy to help. It's 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 difficult now, but I'm happy to help in any way.
I hear you. Okay, thank you, Robert.
Councilmember Harrington?
Thank you, Mayor. Robert, appreciate you coming out and be willing to serve. We need a lot of more people in our community like that. So just the the aspect of you putting yourself out there is, I really appreciate that. One of the things that the Historic Preservation and Cultural Resource Commission is charged with is cataloging and drawing maps for all of the neighborhoods of San Gabriel. So one of the projects they will take on that hasn't happened yet is is actually creating districts in our city. So, for example, they might create a mission area, they might create the village. Who knows where the boundaries are going to be? That's going to be determined upon the commission. So it's a it's a very large project. Have you ever taken on a project like that or been involved in anything like that in the past?
Um, no, nothing to that scale.
Have you ever managed any even smaller projects or, you know, or even not even like if you didn't have to create them, just been assigned projects that have a lot of organization, a lot of that type of it really is artistic, but it's also there's there's actual, you know, drawing lines and determining where one neighborhood stops and where another one starts.
As far as like working with the team and stuff, I I've worked a lot. I have my own business. I've worked a lot on my own. But I have done things like, you know, being on the board of that medical clinic where I have to work as a team. So no, I haven't done anything quite like that.
Okay, no worries. It's it's, I mean, most people that are going on new into commission probably haven't had the exact experience that a commission is. But that's kind of what I'm trying to get your your experience in general. So one question along those lines, as far as being on a commission. You will be required in sometimes to make, you know, decisions where there is no decision that makes everyone happy. Half the people are going to be upset about whatever decision you make. I just want to make sure or whether you're prepared to make decisions on behalf of the public, you know, you have the public's trust basically when you're a commissioner. So are you prepared to make a decision under pressure like that and just basically live with it?
Definitely.
I like that answer. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, well, great. Well, thank you, Robert. Was there anything? We do have some time. Was there anything else that you wanted to clarify or or share with the council that maybe we didn't have an opportunity to address?
Um, I I just appreciate the opportunity. You know, I've lived in San Gabriel for the last fifteen years. I grew up in Ventura County, moved out here to go to Art Center in Pasadena. And I've I've grown to appreciate the the city. That's why, you know, I'm doing this, so.
Well, I I hope either way, you come to, you come more often. I think you just are a tremendous resource that we could use. You know, I'm thinking about just a lot of different projects that will be taking place, but I'm thinking of some of our events that we have, whether Dia de los Muertos or Cinco de Mayo or, you know, if you have an interest in in Japanese culture, you know, we have a lot of different events that that I would love to have you kind of join in and give us your expertise in. And so I hope this is not the last time we see you. You you continue to to stay engaged and, you know, I hope to to just meet you in person one day after COVID allows us to do it.
That would be great.
So thank you again for your time and you have a good evening.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, bye bye.
Bye. Bye.
Well, I've been a member of the Historical Association for many years now. And I've lived in San Gabriel my entire life. And it, this mission is near and dear to my heart completely. I started out going to Washington School all the way through Mission and I think I know a lot about this city. I'm a history buff to begin with and I think that I have a lot to offer the commission because I'm a local historian, I feel.
Great, thank you Pam. We'll start with Vice Mayor Lau.
Hi Pam, how are you? So I have a question for you. You know, you don't have the answer if you don't know. Who is Judge Roy Bean?
Oh, Judge Roy Bean, I, um, there's, there's several different myths about Judge Roy Bean. One of them is that he was in San Gabriel. The other one was that he was in another state and he was a criminal. And there's, there's conflicting stories about that and I'm not sure that Judge Roy Bean ever was in San Gabriel, but possibly.
Okay, that's a good answer. And also he used to own a bar on Las Tunas.
Yes, yes, there was someone, yes.
Yeah. So you know where it is?
I think he was hung eventually for some illicit behavior, but it's not the same Judge Roy Bean that a lot of people think about.
Okay, now the, the real question is, you know, with your expertise in history and, you know, you joined the Historical Society for so long, what kind of a influence you wanna bring in for this Historical Preservation Commission? How can you help?
There's a couple of things. One is to offer my long history of being in San Gabriel and my knowledge of San Gabriel history. And the other one is because I am a history buff and so much of that is dear to me, it's LA, San Gabriel. I really feel that I'm very passionate about preserving the history of our city. And I'm a very proactive person, I'm a doer. And on the Historical Association, at one point when this commission first started, we put, we were asked to put together lists of places in San Gabriel that we felt were significant. And I made a really long list of every, longer list than anybody in the association who did that. And I just feel like I was able to identify things off the cuff practically.
Okay, alright, thank you, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Pooh.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi Pam.
Hi.
How you doing?
Great.
Good, good. How's Chris?
He's doing great. He's walking the dogs right now, so they don't bark. Denise can relate.
Yes, and you do have big, beautiful dogs, so it's quite an effort to walk them all. So, thanks for being willing to serve on this commission and for taking the time to interview with us. I guess I'll ask first, you know, I've always said and, and believe that the past and the future are not mutually exclusive. We just need to take care of both here in the present. And sometimes, you know, the, the, these things about cherishing, celebrating, preserving our history, which we have a lot of, and moving forward into the future, whether there be new developments or any other thing that might be impacting the community are sometimes at odds or, or intention with each other. So I just wanted to give you an opportunity maybe to share your thoughts about, about that balance or tension or how we might be able to utilize perhaps our culture and history to our advantage better.
Well, I, I realize that property owners can do what they wish with their property. I get that. But I do feel that it, if a new, if a property is developed and they take away, they knock down that property, that hopefully that they could keep the facade of that property or something that at least would keep the integrity of the city or keep it in the same vein as that, so that the city looks cohesive.
Okay, and then maybe just as a quick follow-up, what are some of those places that you listed, that you mentioned? I'm curious, 'cause I would love to also hear some, some more stories that I don't know about our history and our past that aren't, you know, we all know about the Mission and, and so forth, but there's, but there's probably a lot of hidden gems that you know that aren't as widely, you know, celebrated.
Well, right here in my neighborhood, which I walk by almost every day, used to be Beth Hardware. And I am so grateful that they kept that building and that the owner that came in there, that he's really tried to keep it pretty much the same. Next door, where the Himalayan establishment is, that was, I don't know if you know, that that was the first auto dealer in San Gabriel. That, that particular block is really something that's really important to me. Right on the corner there of Gerona and Las Tunas, it used to be an empty lot with tumbleweeds. And when I was a kid, all the kids in the neighborhood used to go down there and play army. And we dug trenches.
Wow.
But there were other places that I identified that I think that might have been overlooked somewhat and they were like areas on buildings on Las Tunas that have been there forever, like groups of buildings that are right near San Marino Avenue. They're beautiful if you spend some time looking at them. And there's also like such amazing houses on Country Club Boulevard. I mean, Country Club Avenue. It's, they're just amazing. I walk by with the dogs all the time. But those houses, there's a house there that even has, in front of it, it has these stairs that are right, right before you get to the the sidewalk. And you know what? Those little stairs were to get up in the carriage. So there's just little things like that.
Thanks for sharing those stories and I think that our building department might have a, a problem with folks trying to dig trenches on, on Las Tunas Drive now, so. For those of members of the public listening, we, we're not advising anybody trying to do that at this point in time.
No, I didn't talk about, I didn't say anything about digging the trench on Las Tunas.
That, that's his humor, Pam. Don't, don't worry about it. But you should write a book, Pam. That's all I'm gonna say right now.
Oh.
You should write a book one day.
I don't know how many people have said that to me.
Councilmember Harrington.
Appreciate your time, Pam. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Pam, appreciate you coming out and volunteering, putting your, your service jacket on there and saying, I wanna serve San Gabriel. I appreciate that. Part of the commission's charter is to catalog and designate historic neighborhoods. And I, you know, throughout the entire city. So I think, you know, your long experience in San Gabriel and, you know, seeing how it's changed over the years would lend itself to that. Have you been involved in a project or anything like that where it's, you know, you're, you're working with a group and possibly some experts? And you really would, it comes down to, you're gonna have to decide, you know, what, what, what is a neighborhood? Where does it start? Where does it stop? And any projects like that experience?
Well, you know, I worked with the Historical Association on, on the project to put together things for the, to, to put together this exact same thing for the commission. And certainly in my working career, I worked on committees constantly. That's kind of what you do at Kaiser and, but And, but I don't really have a problem working with a group of people whatsoever. Like I said, I'm a doer. I did identify neighborhoods, I did identify places and neighborhoods. I talk about my own neighborhood, right across from Washington School, there's these nice little stores right there. They're certainly historical and right in the middle of a neighborhood, we find this commercial district. It's great. Same with the Village on Fairview. So, and there's a lot of places, there's a lot of niches that you'll find right around the police department and library.
I think, I'm actually looking at Washington Square out the window right now, so.
I know you are.
So another
We never called it Washington Square, we called it the dime store, you know?
I remember that, yeah. I wanted to know, just a quick follow-up question. So as far as the projects like that go, what do you see as a challenge? Like, like, I think Jason said, balancing the future and the past, like, how do you see, what's the biggest challenges in historic preservation that you see?
I think that the biggest challenge is to get the property owners on board. And understand how possibly their property might be historical and how that could work into the city, the city's objective.
Thank you.
Right. Councilmember Dean.
Thank you Mayor.
Hi Pamela.
Hello Mr. Deng. I haven't had the pleasure to meet you yet.
Yeah, yes, okay. I hope that have some times we can face-to-face to meet there together. Thank you, this is our community. And I saw you have a long life with the, the San Gabriel resident and you have a lovely experience. And, but times change, so it, what's the biggest challenge or your vision for our current relationship with our preservation for the San Gabriel city?
I think that one of the biggest challenges is educating the community. There have, there's a group of us that have lived here a long time, or a longer time, who may be in tune with that. But there's people that have moved in here recently, who aren't really aware of the history of the city. And I think that, that educating people on how important that is to keep is a real challenge.
Thank you Pamela. Thank you Mayor.
Okay, great. Well, since we have a little bit of time Pam, I'm gonna, or Pam, I'm going to ask you just one more question. You know, you, you shared stories about mostly, I would say, the north side. I wanted to know, are there still, except for the Village, I know you mentioned the Village, but aside from the Village, are there areas that maybe I, I, I haven't been able to identify and many people haven't? There isn't, like, Near Valley Boulevard that you think that still are there, that we should be really honoring or celebrating? That has historical significance? Because I know people have said that Valley is, you know, has changed tremendously, obviously it's extremely dense. There's been so much construction over the last two, three decades, but is there something there that we can really kind of look at or, and should be looking at carefully? That maybe it's been overlooked?
I mean, what comes to mind for me, because there's so many places there that aren't, don't exist anymore, but it would be Hawaii Market. That used to be what was called Boys Market. And, you know, down there is where the guy, oh gosh, now what was his name? It's called, he was like the alien guy who, the police department, actually they have his costume.
A man from Mars.
Yeah, a man from Mars, yeah.
But, but actually that's where he, they arrested him. And I think that the Boys Market used to always be like a farmer's market inside of it. And it was someplace where the farmers would come and bring their produce. And I, I remember going there when I was with my mother, when I was younger, quite often. And it, it's, it's a place that's always, that's been there for so long. I mean, there were other markets, there was the movie theater down there, there's just so many places that just don't exist anymore. I know that right on the corner there on the, on the northwest corner, I was kind of sad to see that building go. I mean, a lot of people probably thought, what a crummy building, but if you looked at the facade of it, it was really cool. And I was kind of hoping that they would keep that facade, but they didn't. That's, that's their prerogative. But I'm just hoping that there would be some areas that we could keep.
Well, thank you Pam, I appreciate that. So at this time, this concludes the interview, but is there something else that maybe we just didn't touch upon that you would like to share with, with my colleagues?
Well, I think that one other thing I would like to say about myself is that for the last like 25 years, maybe more, I've been an avid genealogist. And that, it kind of started with me wanting to know my own family history, but I do that for a lot of other people. And I just thought I'd tell you an example of how I just love the research of it all. And I think that that would be something that I could give, that I could really lend to this committee, is that I'm a really good researcher. I've always been interested in who originally owned my house, because I was told years and years ago by somebody in the neighborhood that he was an architect that had built our house. So what I did was I went through the census records and for 1930. And I found who lived there in 1930. And then I went back and I found out that that person had moved from Long Beach to San Gabriel in 1926. Bang, that's my house. So that's kind of, you know, I just wanted you to know that I, I'll go to a lot of lengths to find things out.
Well, that's good to know. It sounds like forensic history there.
Yeah, yeah, it really is, it really is.
Great. Well, thank you so much. Give my best to Chris and the dogs.
Oh yeah.
I have two dogs too, so he can walk my dogs anytime too if he gets
Well, he walks them in the morning and at night.
I know, I, I, wow, he's better than me, but I do run into him sometimes in the morning.
Well, he's in pretty good shape.
Yeah, well, great. Well, thank you again so much for, for joining us and, and being so flexible, because I know with teleconferencing it can get a little complicated. And, you know, we will let you know soon, hopefully. And, you know, you have a pleasant evening, stay safe and thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Good night.
Good night.
lots of things happened, like, you know, we we cannot know, okay, what a city's plan to, to do for us. And also sometimes just to see as a lot of ad, like advertising for, okay, city has some event for the, like a drive for for the Chinese New Year, sometimes for the Public Park. Then this is a big event. But sometimes, you know, connected with the resident and City Hall, like the information which is from the City Hall or the, from the resident, I, I don't think it's very well to, you know, understand each other. So for, for, yeah, by myself, I'm a resident in here, this city. So I'm not quite understand what is the city's plan sometimes. So I think this is a good chance, so like me, to do that way to connect with the resident and City Hall.
Great, thank you Nancy. I'm gonna begin with Councilmember Pooh with the question.
Thank you Mayor. Hi Wade, it's nice to meet you.
Yeah. I, I, I saw you lots of times, you know, Chinese New Year's event and the park, like the drive for.
You're embarrassing me now.
He's very popular.
Please don't forget we're being recorded, so. It's good to see you then, and thank you for being willing to serve on this commission and for taking the time to interview with us. You know, Community Services Commission is in char, not in charge, but helps to advise. It's, it's an advisory commission and covers all of the city's recreational programs, sometimes also, you know, programs for seniors. Has things to do with the park planning and so forth as well. So I just wanted to get a sense, maybe some of your ideas in these areas? And what would be things that you think we can do better in recreational programs, parks, or, you know, senior programs, things like that?
Yeah, I, I totally understand, you know. I, I think, you know, I can speak not only English and Mandarin, and also can speak Kente language. And so I think, you know, you understand the Kente language totally different ways than Mandarin. Okay, sometimes they, they looks like two separate, different, you know, group, because they don't understand the language each other. So I think I can be like bilingual, so connect with the different group of the people, okay? Even in, yeah, in Chinese group. So, and also Asians people, right? And also our neighbor, I, I, I can get a very good, you know, talking, connect with our neighbor who are Mexican people, maybe a Spanish, Spanish or speak, yeah, they speak Spanish, I'm not, yeah, I don't understand. I don't know, okay, where they come from, but also they can speak English. So I think probably, you know, I have this chance to talk with different kind of people and understand what they want. And I think probably the old resident, they are going to let our community is getting much better than before. But they don't know how to tell the people who is in charge in the city. This is the main point.
Great, thank you so much. Appreciate you taking the time and for your answer.
Thank you. Councilmember Harrington?
Thank you Mayor. Thank you Wade for coming. We appreciate it when people volunteer for the city. It's like the mayor said, it's nice when we see people put their name out there and offer their service, so I much appreciate it just for the application. So you mentioned that you seen Jason, I don't know if you've seen the rest of us, at community events. What's your experience with San Gabriel? How do you see our events? And I, I mean that in the way, like, what do you think the city does right? What do you think the city does wrong? What can we improve? Like, like even if it's just outreach or just the events themselves?
Okay, of course, I have sent, so, you know, for the kids, lots of time, I bring him to go to join the July Four events in Smith's Park. I also, oh no, we walked you from the City Hall to the Smith's Park, right? But they're joining that event, also joined the New Year's festivals, yeah, ceremony events in the Mission, right? And also some kind of other events, so we join with them, with the, all of this community. So I, I think I'm the person, because, okay, my job is acupunctureist, right? So I am a self-employed employee, then I, I think I like to help the people, okay? As my job, I like to help the people, help the patients. So I think, you know, if I join that series, you know, the event, I can do something like, you know, to make the committee, everything is much better. So like the events, some So like the event, some, something like, you know, if I can join and give them some good advice or may suggestion, maybe, maybe, okay, can help each other. And I also, if you ask me, so what I did before, or something else?
Well, just what's your experience, yeah, what's your experience, like, as far as, if you, if you, things that you think the city could improve? Or that, or either that or that they do well for those events?
Okay. I, I, I think the city can improve, yes, should use the different way, okay? It's not be one way or two way, different way, try to let the residents who are living in the San Gabriel city, they know everything, or know each other with the city council. And they, the most important is know what the city's plan for the future. It's not only through the, maybe, the newsletter, through the some letter, so, or some, maybe, network, okay? I, for, for example, I think probably lots of aged Chinese people, Asian people, sometimes they not getting used to, to check out information from the network. That's what I think. So we, yeah, we should have found some way to, to know each other, to understand each other and to help each other.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dean?
Hi Nancy, I call you Nancy, another way, right?
Okay.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate you, you, you have this kind of courage to spend your time to apply this commissioner job, okay? I think, like, you always mention, like, you'll try help some, the, your resident group to how to understanding the, the, the city, the event. So my question, so if you possible, you, you, if you can serve our commissioner job, did you have any, like, vision, plan to help our, the city, the event, the park communicate with the the San Gabriel resident group, like you involve the group? Yeah, how do you, did you have any, like, a plan, a vision, yeah?
Okay, that's a very good question, of small detail. But I, you know, I, I think probably we just face, so what are the problems right now? We might, might, we can solve for that. You know, based on the coronavirus nineteen, so right now, COVID nineteen right now, so I, I think everybody is stay at home for a long time, right? Everybody getting too upset, you know, cannot go out for work, cannot for traveling for a long time. So probably city might can find some way, which is like, you know, for, for, for some event. I just think, you know, the July four is my, it's on the way to come, right? So can we just think about it, now maybe we try to keep the, you know, six feet, you know, distance? But also, we can get some, yeah, the prepare for the, some kind of this event, like, you know, Costco. I went to Costco this morning, I say, hey, we can keep the distance. Maybe we, we cannot, you know, together, so at the same time, but we can separate, okay? This is just my thinking, okay? It's not all the plan for the, for the, for the city hall. And like, we can separate time, like, within this two hours, as this kind of a group, maybe one hundred people. And after this, this, after, after this two hours, another two hours, another group of people. But the different group people, they have to apply to join that event first, maybe with the, with the city hall. So at least some family did can maybe feels more happy to, you know, celebrate with the city, city hall together. I, this is just my, my personal's idea, okay? So you can think about it, but doesn't mean that's formal idea. Sorry about. Yeah, so, you know, everybody stay at home feels very, very boring, like, cannot go out to know, like, my son on, stay home every day, never go out. So even he, 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 he cannot, okay, he doesn't know how to wear the mask. Very funny. Oh.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is, this is think about it, okay, we, we, our city, our city hall, city council, so just, you know, yeah, follow the rules, everybody stay home and, you know, if we don't do anything, connect with the resident, with the native people here, so I probably maybe they forgot us. Joking, joking. Yeah, so I, I don't know, maybe for the, no, okay, like, like a drive for, for example, if the family to go, gonna to join the event, you know, drive for the event, probably they are comes out with the whole family, right? If the whole family, probably they come together, so this is like a five people together, another five people together, so they can group between the group and the group, we can have the distances sometimes. I don't know whether this good idea or not, but I just, you know, thinking about it.
Is that your, does that answer your question, Councilmember Dean?
Yeah, thank you Nancy, yeah, so, okay, so you, you, I saw you have a lot of the idea to express by.
Sorry.
Okay, all right, and, yeah, so it's really like, like, I just want to say, you, you, you do this kind of courage to step out, okay? Yeah, I appreciate, thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Lau?
Thank you Mayor, hi Nancy.
Hi.
Hi, nice news, see you here, you don't see me, but I can hear you.
Yeah.
So, yeah, you know, San Gabriel has lunar new year celebration and also dumpling and beer. But one of the events that other cities are doing, I think it's very successful, it's called Alton Moon Festival, Moon Festival. If you are a commissioner, will you introduce Moon Festival to the city?
Sorry, not, not a very clear, so can anybody just a little bit, okay?
Okay.
So there's like a Moon Festival, right?
Moon Festival.
Yes.
Moon cake, you don't know moon cake, right?
I know, I know.
You mean moon cake and watching the moon, yeah?
Yes, yes.
It's a moon festival.
I understand.
For, yeah, for instance, Arcadia been celebrating Moon Festival for, I don't know, twenty some years. Mountain Park is the same thing, but San Gabriel hasn't done that yet. So do you think it's about time to introduce Moon Festival to the resident of San Gabriel?
Yeah, of course, I think San Gabriel has like sixty percent of the Asian people, right? And at least, so I think, you know, everybody, if we, you tell them, we're gonna have the, like, a Moon Festival, oh, yeah. I think everybody will like it. So, you know, of course, if San Gabriel city is going to have that event, of course, I would try to my best to, you know, to talk, talking with the, our neighbor and the residents in our city. But why I didn't, you know, mention for that, because I just think what is come first, you know, we can do, that is a drive for. So it's coming, you know, the first, that's why I think about it. If after that, we do everything so well, I think it's Chinese Moon Kick Festival, this is a great, you know, yeah, I know. I also translate all, the, all, all the, all the, the Moon Festivals advertising for the Arcadia City. I, you know, I got it, yeah, last year, I did. You know, I think it's very good way to let the, the, all the people, all the residents, they know each other. They can, yeah, yeah, help each other, that's good way.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
One thing that you mentioned, you know, I guess the city does not reach out to all the residents. So if you are a commissioner, how can you help, you know, to to spread the news and say, hey, we're gonna have a new Moon Festival? So are you gonna use social media, are you gonna use, you know, newspaper or radio to announce this type of event? How do you, yeah, so how do you use the, the media to access to our residents?
Yeah, that's very good question. Yeah, for me, I, if I, yeah, I want to do, I can, okay, of course, first of all, I might get some newsletter from the city, city hall, then I probably just go to knock the, some neighbor's door and find someone who can help me, okay? And, you know, if I knocked ten door, ten neighbor's door, if someone can separate, yes, spread this all the news out for me, then I will choose one of them to try to tell the, their neighbor. Then I think probably like one, okay, for example, one block, I find one who want to spread this news for me, then I ask him or her to try to tell her neighbor. Then I find another block's neighbor, they, who wants to do that? I cannot do everything, right? I just founded them to, yeah, to tell the, their neighbor. Then I tried to connect with the one of the block's resident, that's all. I think that, that's good, you know, way to find everybody to help each other.
Yeah, it's doable, I think San Gabriel is a small community, so actually you could just knock on doors.
I, I, I know, this for example, like, you know, I, I went to the barber's shop, you know, also tell the owners, let them to spread this news out. I, I think probably, I, I, I can, you know, find someone should to do that. But I'm only one, right? So you think I cannot do everything that, but we have a WeChat, right? We can, yeah, set up the WeChat, you know, group, we can tell each other, tell everybody more quickly. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much Nancy, thank you.
So Nancy, that concludes the questions from the council. I just wanted to give you the opportunity to let us know, is there something that we didn't ask you or that you would really like to share? Something you want us to know more about you?
Of course, if you want to know, so just, just.
No, no, no. It's up to you, if there's something else you want to add, you know, if there is, if there is anything else you would like to tell us. If not, that's okay, I just wanted to give you the opportunity.
I don't know, I don't know what do you want to know, okay? I, last time, so when I filled the application forms, I forgot, you know, because that is a little bit in hurry. I, I, they asked whether I joined some others, like associations, whether that. So, yeah, after I sent the applications out, I suddenly realized that I, I joined one community association, which name is Better Community Foundation. That is the, that association's name, okay, I am the treasurer in there. Yeah, so, so before apply that, I already, I'm already want to help the community, right? It's not just now.
And we, we thank you for that, that, well appreciated, everyone should do their part to help the community. And so, so with that, Nancy, that concludes our interview. You know, have a, have a nice rest of the evening.
Oh, sorry, sorry, let me, sorry, excuse me, let me, yeah, add a little bit of information more. Then started from the, the March this year. So when the state just stopped, they ask us to have to stay, everybody stay at home. Then I joined our foundation, so I, we send lots of masks, PPE, to go to the different hospital. By myself, I send a PPE, but go to, to the Hambler Hospital. Because I've called a Hambler Hospital and a San Gabriel Hospital, asked them what do they need? And about like masks or something, that San Gabriel's hospital, they told me, they don't need it. Okay, they don't need it, so I, Hambler's Hospital, they say they need it, so I send it to them. And after that, I joined, you know, different groups and sent lots of PPE, go to the Kaiser's, Kaiser in downtown, and USC and downtown, and, and the different, you know, hospital, okay? I think probably three or four times with them. So I think by my experience, I like to help the people. So I think I helped, I told my friend, told all the member, I say, help hospitals, the doctor and the nurse, finally is help us, if they are sick, they, nobody help us if someone is sick, right? So we have to do our best, try to find a lot, the PPE to send to them, let them can continue work for us.
Well, absolutely, we're one, one large community, so I'm sure they appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Hambler's our neighbor, so, so that's.
Yes, yes.
Well Nancy, have a great evening and we will get back to you. So that concludes our interview.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much, very nice to see you, everybody, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Now we're going to continue on, I'll make the announcement that the time for public comment on this item is now closed. Assistant City Clerk Bonus, please read any comments we've received.
Mayor, we haven't received any comments.
Okay, well now we'll proceed with the council deliberation and discussion about the interviews. I have decided I'm going to try to organize it in such a way that I'm hoping will help the discussion go smoothly. So we're going to first tackle the Design Review Commission and the Community Service Commission. And just a reminder, well, to the public in particular, for the Design Review Commission, we have three seats that have expired and all three incumbents have re-applied. That would be Raymond Chang, Marla Nadolny, and Nick Sai Lo. For the Community Services Commission, we have three seats that are available. Two of the incumbents have re-applied and then we have one new candidate that we just heard from, we, or Nancy Fang. And so the two incumbents that re-applied for the Community Service Commission is Cheryl and Cabot, Teresa Werta, and Teresa Werta. And then for the third seat would be again, we, Nancy Fang. So I'm going to go council by council and see if we can reach an agreement on both the Design Review Commission and the Community Services Commission. I'll start with Councilmember Harrington, did I make myself clear, I hope?
Yeah, we have the same number of applicants as vacant seats.
Yeah, we have the same number of applicants as vacant seats.
Yes, for both, but we do have one new person for the Community Services Commission.
Yeah.
And so I just need to make sure, if you can give yay or nay, if that.
Yeah, I'm happy, I'm fine.
Okay, great. Councilmember Ding?
Yes.
Okay, Council Vice Mayor Lau?
Yes, Mayor, I think the new applicant Nancy Fang is, is good for Community Service. And the other three for Design Review, those incumbents, I think they deserve another term.
Great, thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Pu?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question of staff. Who is the current Chair of the Community Services Commission?
This is Rebecca, this is Director Perez. Our Bronwyn Velazquez is the current Chair.
And who's the Vice Chair?
Actually, I take that back. I'm sorry, Sherry Cabot is the current Chair. Bronwyn is the Vice Chair.
Okay, and when will, and does that, does the chairship rotate annually or how often?
So the commission at this point is not meeting. And like, our, the commission term actually goes from October through June. So the commission actually will not be meeting again until October, at which time that, that term will, will, or the, the chairship, if you will, will change. Staff's recommendation would be that because Ms. Cabot was not able to be Chair for very long, that we would continue her as, as Chair.
Interesting, okay, thank you so much. Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with appointing these three individuals on these, on each of these commissions to the three seats that are available. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, okay, so that takes care of the two commissions. The next commission would be.
Mayor?
Yes?
Sorry to interrupt. Just making sure, for those appointments, the one for the vacant seat for the Community Services Commission, there's one that's only for a one-year term. Who would you like me to put in that position?
Well, at this point, looking at the list, I think it would be appropriate to have We Nancy Fang for the one-year seat unless I see if this, are there any objections to that?
I agree.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you, Marilyn, for bringing that up. Okay, Planning Commission, so just to remind everybody with the Planning Commission, let me just go through my notes real quick. We have three seats that need appointments. Two of the three have reapplied. The current commissioners, that's Thomas Claywetter and Jingbo Lu. And then we had two candidates who interviewed this evening, George Carney and Mark Juarez. And so at this time, we need to make a decision how we would like to proceed. We can ask, we can reappoint the incumbents and then select, you know, either Mr. Carney or Mr. Juarez. So at this time, let's start with the discussion or conversation. Let's see, should we start with Councilmember Harrington?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, looking at the candidates, I think they both bring something unique. You know, the, I'm assuming I'm gonna, I'm gonna reinstall the incumbents.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that, yes.
Yeah, so the, out of the two new applicants, I think they just have, they have a different, I think a different approach, and obviously, Mr. Juarez has been on, on commission previously as well as our commission. And then Mr. Carney has, has experience with the, with a lot of energy projects. It's, it seems as if both are longtime residents, so they'll, they'll give respect to the community. So it really comes down to me the way, in my opinion, the way they answered the questions. And I liked both of their answers when I asked them regarding density. And I, I think the thing that distinguished for me was Mr. Carney. He actually said that his thoughts have changed because of what he's seen recently. And I think that shows, you know, some, some thoughtfulness that, you know, you're not just dogmatic and everything's gonna be always the same. So I think I would lean towards Mr. Carney on that one.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ding?
Okay, so I, so two, we don't need an interview, right? Because this is for me the first time.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, we, we had made a decision collectively that the incumbents, we would not interview again, so I apologize for that. That, that was the consensus that staff gained from talking to the council members. Or not talking, but emailing council members.
Okay, actually, this question I should be asking before.
Yeah, you should, but that's okay.
Okay.
I apologize, you know, I'll take responsibility for that.
Okay. So, yeah, I, I, I also, yeah, agree to like, to incumbent, that's no problem. So for the two of them, they, well, by it actually is, it's a it's a tough decision, both, it's, it's, it's a good candidate, okay? So for me, okay, I just missed the Mark Juarez, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Lau?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, those two incumbents, they've been doing a great job. You know, Jingbo Wu and Thomas Clawwitter. My question is, is Mark Juarez is also applying for historic preservation or no?
Well, that was the question I asked him in the beginning of the interview because it wasn't made clear in the application. And he said that if he didn't get selected, he would be interested in, in being reappointed to the historical, or considered to be reappointed on the Historical Commission, where he currently is serving, but his term has expired also.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I liked his experience because he was involved with Alhambra. And currently, he's not disappointed with the, the late Main Street developments. And I think, well, a lot of people are happy about that. But George Carney has experience in energy. You know, he saved so much money for both school districts, San Gabriel School, Glendora School District. So he's on a planning commission. Well, maybe he can bring in smart design for energy consumption. I don't know, you know. So it's a tough, tough decision. Because I, I think, I don't want to George also own Civil Service Commission, right? So if he doesn't get on Planning Commission, he still can serve for civil services. Is, is that correct?
If, if he's interested, I, I didn't ask him the question and he didn't put that on the application either.
Oh, he did not?
Yeah. Mayor? Let me just look at, yeah, I, I know what you're gonna say, Marilyn. Let me, actually, he, he would continue on the Civil Service Commission because his term expires 2021, Jen. So he would, he would automatically continue on.
And he's willing to continue on, just wanted to.
Oh, he is willing, okay. I didn't ask him that question.
Okay, all right, that's good, that's good. Then, yeah, I would, I would pick Mark because he's, you know, he has experienced in planning before. And he's been in this community for a long time. So I think he can bring in a lot of help to our planning commission. But I, of course, I want to keep George too, you know, George is a great guy. He's in San Gabriel for fifty-three years or something. So, yeah, I don't want to lose him either. But for planning commission, you know, I just compare these two with their past experience. I would think Mark, Mark would, would be a better choice.
Okay, okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Pu?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I agree. This is a, this is definitely the hardest one of the commissions that we're trying to appoint for vacancies. I have a question for staff again, because I do think that both George Carney and Mark Juarez are well-qualified. So I wanted to actually examine the incumbents and what their level of participation has been recently, if they're still engaged and actively involved in the planning process. You know, and for members of the public, this, this commission, one of the seats is, is open because our longtime planning commissioner and longtime Chair of the Commission, Norm Garden, has retired from the, from the commission. And so and so that's why there's one open seat, even though the one, one, shall I say, one seat open without a returning incumbent. So I'm curious to hear what, you know, what staff has to say about Clawwitter's, you know, participation in recent, obviously, there haven't been many, you know, in-person meetings, but, but let's say over the last year or year and a half.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm an Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director. Great question, and what I would say is actually, both commissioners have been extremely involved. We've had a really busy year. We've taken a number of projects, a lot of critical projects that have come forth, the Planning Commission. And both of the incumbents have been engaged, involved. In the case of Mr. Clawwitter, he serves as the Vice Chair. And there have been instances when our previous Chair was not able to be at the meetings and he has helped chair the meetings. So I would say, and I'm looking at their attendance records, both have been at the meetings, both have participated, and they have not shied away from decisions.
Okay. So do I take it to that with Chairman Garden retiring from the commission, would Vice Chair Clawwitter take over the chairship?
I think that would become an item that we would agendize at the, at a commission meeting in the near future, once we know who our next appointee is and they would have that discussion and make a decision.
I see. I will note, I mean, one thing that I do also like about these two new applicants is that they both live in the South. And in the past, I think that the commission has been very heavily more, you know, from residents in the North. And Mr. Liu and Mr. Clawwitter both also live in the North. I know that also, Mr. Schwartz and Mr. Mamtha Perkhor also live in the North. So, so this is where I'm, you know, this is where I'm, I'm kind of like struggling and thinking about balance in the city. And I don't attend the Planning Commission meeting, so I can't see or hear, and I don't see and hear what their level of discussion is, the kind of comments they make. Both of the, both incumbents, Mr. Liu and Mr. Clawwitter are architects, as I understand it. Mr. Liu's background is in, as I recall, is like historic architecture or something along those lines. Could you remind me about that again, Arminé?
He is an architect by trade. He does have an extensive background in historic preservation. And I believe he, he is also involved with the historical organization in a nearby community. He understands that's part of his background as well. And in the time that I've had experiences working with both of these commissioners, they have certainly pulled from their experiences in the industry. And I think with all the members of our Planning Commission especially, it has been great to have commissioners that have a vast background in the industry because I think if anything, they've done a great job deliberating on the project, pulling from some of their experiences while keeping the objectivity when it comes to the city of San Gabriel itself.
Yeah, you know, with, with Chairman Garden on the commission too, it used to have three architects. And, and now I feel like as well, if if there's only one architect on the commission, there need, you know, there wouldn't be a countervailing or balancing sort of voice or, or force that could, that knows the language of architectures, you know, as it applies to these projects. So, so I think I, you've managed to convince me that having both architect and both incumbents come back is a good thing. And that then basically the choices between George Carney and Mark Juarez. And in that respect, I think I would prefer George Carney. I think I, I mentioned during the interview process, we don't have a voice for energy sustainability on the commission right now. And he's been doing it for fourteen years. So I think he's developed a certain level of expertise and probably some domain knowledge on how perhaps some of those types of, and he talked about it himself, you know, new technologies, things like that could be incorporated into whether they're the larger projects or even, you know, smaller residential home usage. I think that, that's something that we could perhaps even, you know, promote more throughout the city and encourage people to adopt. I'm not sure what the status is of all the, you know, the various programs for it now. But, but in any case, I think it's a good thing to encourage. And I think that his voice on the, on the commission would serve those purposes, even though I think, you know, Mark is also very well-qualified. I think they have pretty much the same perspective, in my opinion, as far as development goes and, and balanced development. And, you know, not, not going the, that, well, I think both recognizing there is a need for some areas or some places in our commercial, along our commercial corridors. I think that could use some sprucing up, let's say. But then, that, that there's also the need to make sure we always respect and, and honor and celebrate our rich history as well. So, so for me, that's why George Carney brings an additional element that, you know, we don't already have and that I think would be a benefit to the community. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I guess I'm the last one to vote here. First of all, I'll start with the incumbents. I think with Mr. Garden leaving after so many years, twenty years, as we honored him last week, there's gonna be a tremendous hole. He, he, he was there for so long and he just had so much knowledge. And I think both the incumbents would, would be good to keep them there for consistency. And again, I believe both of them will rise to, to the occasion and have risen. I know Mr. Claywetter, as Arminé mentioned, has already chaired several meetings. So I would like to bring, I would, I agree with, I think, all my colleagues, bring both incumbents back. So, so we're down to Mr. Carney and Mr. Juarez, both of which listed me as one of their references. So it's really difficult. I, I, I feel like they both bring so much to the table. They're both teachers. They both have been here for quite a long time. And yes, they, they do live in the South area. And that's an area that we, we just don't have proper representation as council. That, that was one of the things I had brought up when I first joined is we really need to know where our commissioners are from because it just gives, you know, we want to make sure this commission represents the community as a whole. So I do look at that also. As a whole, so I, I do look at that also. I, I think for me, um, what was the decisive factor here was that I, I, I felt that they both had. Qualities to bring to the table, um, but in particular, um, Mr. Carney with his, with the environmental sustainability, I, I was part of the school. I was on the school board when we first created that role and it was um. So, some people felt it was a waste of time, that how could we ever save money, that we were doing everything we had already could. And um, and he proved um the naysayers wrong, he saved us a lot of money and he continued on in Glendora. And you know, his, his number of years that he's now been there, I was there from the beginning to see him continue on and, and. For him to change his tune, I, I think uh, if you know Mr. Carney, that's a, a huge leap, uh, he's. He has very set in his ways, but, but I can see that um he's been um very helpful for both. The San Gabriel School District, but also for Glendora. And he's continuing to expand his scope, and I think that's an expertise that looking at. The commissioners that we have in place right now, we just don't have that, that is not um, an, an area that um. You know, uh, an area that's, that any of the other commissioners could really speak to, so um, I will, I will um. I would like to see Mr. Carney as, as the uh candidate, uh, like to see him appointed. And so as I'm going through this um matrix, ho- hopefully, I, I wrote down the right notes, but what I see is uh. Three for Mr. Carney and two for Mr. Juarez.
I'd like to um clarify, so I didn't realize that George Carney was already, I thought his commission was up. I didn't realize he was still on the civil service commission.
Yeah, he's on the civil service commission, his term, his expiration date, or the expiration date would be twenty twenty-one.
Okay, I didn't realize that. I think that kind of changes my thinking because I'd rather have more commissioners than less and it would be a. I think it's gonna be a task to fit backfill the civil service, so I think I would, I would go with Mr. Juarez in that case.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah, uh, so I, I did get um feedback from the city attorney. And Mr. Carney can serve on both commissions because they do not overlap in subject matter and so there wouldn't be a conflict.
Oh, okay, well, there's some more information, thank you Edward for that information. Okay, uh, Councilmember Harrington, does that, uh, that additional information help in any way?
Uh, not really, I didn't even realize he was, he was on, I knew he was on the commission, I didn't realize he was, his term wasn't up, I don't, I don't, whether it's legal to serve on two. Two commissions, I don't think it's appropriate to, like, I would never serve on two commissions, I just don't think it's. Um, a good thing to start in this city. I don't know why we would allow that, I mean, maybe it's legal, but I wouldn't want that to, to be a precedent where we can serve on. Otherwise, we could have someone on design and civil service, we could have someone on, you know, did you cross over, I don't, I don't like that idea.
Well, well, let me get clarification from Edward, Edward, is it because it's civil service that um, because I don't believe you can cross over, you can't, you can't be on planning and historical at the same time?
No, I didn't say that, it's like, for example, like they could be on design and, and civil or planning and civil.
Yeah, but, but they can't be on planning and design at the same time.
No, no.
Yeah, okay.
Correct, because subject matters are just too closely.
Okay, yeah, just for clarification. Okay, so um, Councilmember Harrington, did, oh, I'm sorry, I.
I mean, I mean, for me, it was a coin toss in the first place, it was just very, they were very close. I think I'd rather keep Mr. Carney on civil service and then um appoint Mr. Juarez.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Pooh, I see your, your mic is on.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I actually, I had some connection issues, so I didn't hear a lot of this discussion in the last couple of minutes. But I think I got the gist, which is uh be- because uh George Carney is al- already on the civil service commission now, I, uh. Councilmember Harrington is changing his opinion with respect to the third seat, is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, because um, to me, in the first place, it was very close, it was like almost just a coin toss, um. But I'd rather have Mr. Carney stay on civil service and then appoint Mr. Juarez.
Yeah, I mean, uh, in a way, though, I feel like that's punishing Mr. Carney for already being a civil service commissioner, um, and uh. So I feel that that, that is a little bit unfair, I mean, of course, you know, the, the will of the council is the will of the council, but I think that um. I think that, you know, it, it seems to be kind of a. I don't know, um. Perhaps a, like a. Sort of like a um, maybe counterintuitive uh reason, I think, um, is maybe what I'm trying to say. I, I, I can't, I'm, you know, it's not, it's not illogical, I'm just saying that, like. It, it, basically, you're just saying, you know, and I think Councilmember Liao made the same point, which is that um. Because he's already serving on another commission, then you would not appoint him to this new commission, and that, to me, doesn't make, you know, doesn't make that much sense. Um, to, because we can find and appoint another civil service commissioner, um, as he mentioned, it hasn't even met in the last two years. Um, but um. But if we think he, he's the better qualified person for the planning commission, um, then I don't see why. His current service on a, on, on another commission should reflect negatively for him, you know, with respect to the planning commission. And I, you know, I would agree too, that not, it's probably, I don't have, I'm, I'm relatively agnostic about him serving on two commissions at a time, I uh. I wouldn't think that it's necessarily a conflict, I also don't necessarily think it's, necessarily think it's best practice either. But uh, again, if he were to resign from the civil service commission and, and join the planning commission, I, I kind of don't see it as being an issue. So, and again, I apologize, I mean, I, I, I missed the discussion of the last, like, three, four minutes or so, but uh. But it seems like uh, you know, it seems like a. Like a um bad reason, I guess, a bad reason to ding somebody, like, like a, kind of like a. If you want to encourage people to, you know, uh volunteer and, and serve the community, participate on these commissions. You know, current service on a commission does not seem like a, a reason to, to, you know, um. To deny uh that same person, you know, service on another, on a different commission, that's my opinion.
I also was going to add that um, I wish we had the opportunity to maybe even ask him the question, I, I did ask Mr. Juarez. But I, I should have also asked um Mr. Carney, um, but I think he made it clear that the civil commission isn't as active, they haven't met. And I know the planning commission, that's something that he has been um very interested in for, for, for many years. Um, and um, again, I, I agree, I, it just doesn't seem to make sense to, to punish him for that, but um. Anyway, uh, I don't know if there's any other comments from Councilmember Dean or Vice Mayor Lau? Because I see Vice Mayor Lau's um, mic is on, did you want to say something, Vice Mayor?
Uh, well, you know, I like both of them, you know, Mr. Carney and Mr. Juarez, uh, yeah, they're uh like old timey residents. Uh, in our community and both of the great uh contribution uh to our society. George Carney has done such a great job uh in school, you know, especially in mock trial, I just couldn't believe how many years it was. Uh, the mock trial, when he conducted a mock trial in uh middle schools. Um, but I compare the experiences for city planning and maybe economic development. See, I didn't ask uh Mr. Juarez, they, has he done anything helping uh Alhambra or San Gabriel regarding that? But at least he was involved with planning uh commission in Alhambra, so he knows the history of the development in our area. You know, I, I, I read this from uh one of our co-owners club president. He claimed, well, you know, for past thirty, forty years, he's trying to move the city, but, you know, uh, nobody agreed. Uh, to bring in businesses because they think, oh, this is a bedroom community, they don't need all this development in our San Gabriel. So anyway, it took a lot of courage and, you know, determination to make changes. So if um, I, I, I stick, stick with Mark because I think he has experienced before, so I think he will be uh beneficial to our city. So that's the reason, you know, both, both of them great, I, I just couldn't uh, you know, turn them down to any services, I want to give them chances. But especially um if Mark has that kind of uh past experience and we can use his experience in San Gabriel, eh, that would be great. You know, I, I don't know any other people that have that kind of a experience before, uh, because a lot of just newcomers. So, yeah, I stick with uh Mark Juarez.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Pooh, you had the mic on?
Yeah, I mean, I'd just like to respond to that uh comment because I, I did hear that earlier, uh. And I, I think that, you know, the development on Maine and, and Alhambra has been extremely controversial, um, uh, within the Alhambra community. Um, so, uh, you know, there's a benefit to experience, but uh, at the same time, um. That, that corridor that he specifically talked about too, you know, is not viewed at, uh, you know, you universally as being a positive. Uh, a change for the better in, in the city of Alhambra. And so uh, yeah, I, I, I think that that experience can also, can cut both ways as well, and in my mind, um. There are things that I think that Alhambra does well and, and maybe, you know, has done better than we have and, and, and in the past, let's say fifteen, twenty years or so. Uh, but there are also things that I think that are, we do. That are, that are just us, they're unique to us and uh, you know, I'm, I'm not the type of person to advocate that we ever chase or any other community, like. Try to be like Alhambra, or try to be like Arcadia or anywhere else, you know, we are San Gabriel and we should just uh, you know, always. Market ourselves uh, and our own image um for the unique community that we are. And in fact, I think that's the better um image to project, especially in this day and age, um, that uh, where. Where it, it's not, I, I think what's, what's attractive to, to people is not, is not always just, it's not just the mass market, it's the niche, right? And that's something that we have in spades, it's, it's our mom and pop restaurants and, and shops, it's um, you know, our unique blend of, of culture and various layers of history. So, so anyways, I just wanted to make that comment that, that just because he happened to be on the planning commission in Alhambra. During those years when they were approving all those projects on Main Street that tend to make it feel like a valley of, of, in a, in a certain sense, because there's like, you know, tall buildings. Four or five story buildings on each side of, of Maine, um, there, you know. Is that what we really want? I don't think that it's necessarily a positive thing, thank you.
I, I was also gonna add that the experience that my, uh, Mr. Juarez mentioned, that was twenty years ago. And a lot has changed in twenty years, he's mentioned nineteen eighty-nine to nineteen ninety-seven, so I think we need to also take that into consideration. Look, it's just, it's just a different world now and um, you know, I, I would say that whatever took place. Twenty years ago has dramatically changed now. But uh, Council, I mean, Vice Mayor Lau, I know you have your mic on, did you want to add something?
Uh, no, I, I think this is what I thought, you know, you, we can uh, you know. Keep Mark Juarez as the planning commissioner. And maybe in the future, we can invite uh George Carney uh to apply for uh planning commissioner. Uh, if one of the incumbent decided to uh dropped out, maybe, I think there's a possibility, you know, and you never know. Because uh, other than COVID nineteen, a lot of people couldn't keep their jobs, so, you know, maybe, you know, future, some commissioners decide to. Just drop out uh, uh, you know, San Gabriel Planning Commission, so. Uh, what, yeah, I would encourage uh George Carney to apply. Right away, yeah.
Okay, okay, if there, is there any other discussion from any council members? Okay, well then, um, the, the final um vote or direction is um. We would appoint uh Mr. Juarez, Thomas Claywader and Jimbo Lu for um planning commission. Okay, next, next uh commission is historical. And um, let me just go through the situation, we have um. Beatrice Moharo, who is an incumbent, who um reapplied. Mark Juarez was now on um planning commission, so we actually have, uh, we have two vacancies with one incumbent who has reapplied. And the uh individuals who applied this evening for us to consider is Kyle DeBrent, Robert Martinez and Pamela Bingham. So there's two spots, three new candidates and one incumbent. So let's see, um. Well, Councilmember Dean, would, would you like to start since uh, there's been some, a lot of conversation for. I'll let Councilmember Pooh and Vice Mayor Lau kind of take a moment.
Okay.
Okay, so, you're fresh.
Okay, the, uh. All the Kennedy, it's a, I, I think it's a good, like, I, I, I glad we have the. A lot of the resident warrant here, they want the, the, become the, our, the commissioner, no matter which one position, okay? And uh, right now, we discussed the historical uh, the commissioner, so uh, yeah.
Well, would you like the incumbent to come back? I know you didn't have a chance to meet her, so I'll start there.
Okay, yeah, yeah, keep the incoming comeback, okay? And uh.
So you have one more choice.
One more choice.
Yeah, I know.
It's, it's really tough.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. Yeah. The cows have the lot of idea and uh. A camera have the long time, long term, the history, I, I heard it's, it's already has history too, alright, so. Robert Martinez, yeah, he's not too many experience. Uh, if uh. If for the, for the, like, our song map, like uh, see the, okay. Because the, where most it's, it's on the north, right? So if we consider on the, on the, on the source, the source area that people living, so. If we, we can listen their opinion, so. I, I, I just, yeah, for this reason, I choose the Robert Martinez.
Okay. Okay, uh, Vice Mayor Lau?
Uh, yeah, it's uh, it's a tough choice, I guess, you know, we'll keep the uh incumbent, uh, Beatrice. Um, but the three candidates, they're all very good, they're all very involved, well, except Robert, actually, I don't know. Anything about Robert, but, you know, because he majored in art, he has different types of uh business. So in a way, he's more. I would say creative, but he didn't know a whole lot about San Gabriel, you were asking about the, the gray barn. Uh, anybody can, can tell me where's the gray barn, you know, right next to uh Mission Playhouse, but he seems like he doesn't know. But. I don't know, I, I think Pamela uh would work very well. I don't know. I I think Pamela uh would work very well because she is already involved with uh uh Historical Association and but but we want new people to get involved uh with cities uh public affairs. I would think we want to bring in new new things. You know, Kyle's been around for a long time too, uh, even though he's very young. He and his wife uh very involved with uh Education Foundation. And and of course, you know, uh, we need his energy. But um, yeah, I don't know. This is a tough call. I.
Would you like me to come back to you?
No, I I again, you know, I want to see new faces.
Okay.
So I I I think Robert Martinez will just give him a try. We'll see uh what kind of new energy can bring in to our uh community, you know? That's something, I like uh people majoring in art because they're always creative. They never give up, okay, because they can see the truth. They can see the beauty of the city. So that's something I I like about Robert. So, okay.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Harrington?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think all the candidates will would serve well. Unfortunately, we have to eliminate one. Um, I'll go with Beatrice as the incumbent. I think um we've, uh, the staff has has said that she's doing well. I liked Pam's um just experience in San Gabriel in general. I just, I think that brings something that um no amount of creativity or no amount of, oh, I really want to work hard, even though she said she would, um replaces that. I've done a lot of, um, and I've been in San Gabriel off and on since the eighties, mid, early to mid eighties. And I would say I I've studied a lot. I kind of know a lot about, you know, historical buildings and areas and been working on stuff like that for a long time. I would say Pam probably knows more than I do. I wouldn't, I wouldn't have to venture far to say that about, you know, what where things were, what they were, you know, a lot of those stories of the city. I used to play in, you know, in the in Lugo Park, we used to play baseball there. I mean, I, but my experience was more, you know, during the eighties, I was a teenager, so it was a little different. I think she brings, that's something you can't really replace either with education, like a formal education. She's from here, she's been here all life, so that's almost irreplaceable. Um, and when it comes down to the answers uh between Kyle and Robert, I liked Kyle's answers better. Um, like to me, where someone lives in the city is not as important as to how they see the city. So it really comes down to what's what's your involvement, what's your experience? And then the different factor for me was the answers to the questions. So I would go with Pamela and Kyle.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Pooh? Council, ah, we lost him. Councilmember Pooh? Let me see if I can get him.
Mayor, I I'd like to clarify something that um Councilmember Harrington said. Did he say incumbent and Kyle, or did he say Pamela and Kyle?
That was Pamela, Pamela.
Pamela and Kyle, so not Beatrice.
No, I said I'll keep Beatrice and then Kyle and Pamela.
There's only two seats that are expiring.
Oh, I thought you said there were three.
Two seats for the Historic Preservation and Cultural Resource Commission.
Yeah, it it's Beatrice and Mark, but Mark now is at planning, so we have two seats available.
Oh, got it.
So so it's Beatrice and Pam. That's what I understood, Councilmember Harrington. Those were your choices?
No, actually, I said I would leave Beatrice and then pick Kyle and Pamela. I didn't realize, I thought.
Oh, why didn't he? Okay, then I misunderstood you. Thank you, Marilyn, for clarifying that I heard Beatrice and Pam. Okay, uh, ju- just an update, uh, Councilmember Pooh um got disconnected, so he's going to try to dial back in. So, but we can continue on with the conversation or the discussion. Uh, Councilmember Harrington?
Yeah, let me go back and look at my notes. I'll be right back.
So why don't we pause for five minutes or maybe less? Historical Preservation and Cultural Resource Commission, uh, Councilmember Pooh is now back on. Uh, why don't we go to you and let us know what your thoughts are on the appointments?
Great, yeah, thanks. I'd like to uh also ask staff, you know, about um Beatrice Moharo and whether they recommend her reappointment.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, um, she actually has been a great new commissioner. Um, as you all know, we formed this commission last year, um, and all of the commissioners were newly appointed. Um, Beatrice has become very active. She serves, uh, I'm calling it subcommittees, but they've got some uh special working groups within the commission where they've designated different members uh of the commission to work on special projects. She has volunteered to be a part of that. I know she's actively working with the chair um on some pro- project. And I think it would be a benefit to have her return and continue the work that she started and see how far she can help take it.
Okay, thank you. In that case, we just have to decide one more seat. Um, and I think among the three applicants, appreciate all of their uh, you know, willingness to serve, of course. I personally, I think, felt the strongest affinity with Kyle DeBrent. And uh, part of it um was um, I I don't know, I think it's just part part of it was just uh his responses to.
Did we lose him again?
Mayor Minchaka, I texted him the call-in number so uh he can call in using his phone rather than over his internet.
And I just spoke to him on the phone. He's just going to call in. So Jonathan, if you can be ready to to accept his call.
Mayor, apologize. Can we take a two-minute recess to put it all back together?
Sure, okay, two-minute recess.
You're live.
Okay, we'll continue with the Councilmember Pooh. Uh, would you like to continue with your deliberation?
Sure, I'm sorry about that. I seem to be having internet connectivity issues. Um, and so what was the last thing you heard me say?
Uh, let's see, I I think it was with uh question, uh, Arminay had a chance to finish the question regarding um the incumbent uh Beatrice Moharo about her uh performance. And then that's the last thing I remember.
Okay, so after that, I was basically saying, yeah, then it basically comes down to a choice between one of the three new applicants. And I appreciate all of theirs willing to cer- willingness to serve. Um, but for me personally, I think I felt uh the strongest affinity with Kyle DeBrent. Um, I think it's not only his responses with respect to um how he sees historic preservation um in the city, but also I think um I, what I think of is a, you know, a built-in ability or built-in uh compatibility with other members of the of the um, you know, existing members of the commission. Um, and I, it's not to say that the other two applicants would not be able to work with the other commissioners well, but um, but I just feel like um, you know, there's already a closer fit between Kyle and some of the other existing members. Um, and you know, it was, we adore, we adore Pam. She's a pillar of the community. She has so much knowledge, you know, about the history of the city and and um just always love her stories uh as as we heard during her interview. But I wonder if too, if uh it might be somewhat frustrating for her in a sense that the, you know, as Councilmember Harrington mentioned during the interviews, the this commission has a very specific task and a very specific set of things it needs to accomplish um in, you know, in the course of its work. And it's really still at the beginning stages of that. It's not just about, you know, let's designate this building here or designate that building here. There's, you know, an actual uh methodology that has to be, has to be followed. And so, and so I think that um, I think that for those reasons, um, I think Kyle would be a better fit uh on the on the Historic Preservation and Cultural Resources Commission than any of the, than the other two uh candidates. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Harrington?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the time to go back through my notes. Um, and actually, I have the application from Beatrice last year. I, and after reading it, I remember um the story she was telling us about her growing up in San Gabriel and the history that that her family um discussed around the dinner table and things like that kind of jarred in my memory when I looked at her application from last year. That's why I'm glad I keep a lot of my council uh documents. So I think as between the the three, I'm still going to stick with Beatrice. And then, like Jason said, it's difficult, but I think Kyle's my choice for that one.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay, so Beatrice and Kyle for Councilmember Harrington. I apologize for some of the confusion earlier. Okay, well then, um, I um, I too would like to see Beatrice Moharo return. She's made a, I mean, a tremendous effort i- in the package. You know, she she went through the training, she put her certificate there. So for me, that shows a true commitment. This is probably one of the hardest working commissions because it's it's the first in this city. There's a lot of startup. We've had a lot of changes with um personnel staffing. And I I know um it can get quite frustrating. Um, and they have a a huge task uh ahead of them. They they need every person to be a working member. And um, you know, I I felt all three of them, you know, have good intentions. I think they they do want to make contributions to our community. Um, I felt Robert, um, you know, lacked the experience uh because this is a a commission that um you really have to be engaged in some level with this community um to really kind of understand what the mission is and the urgency is. Um, and and for that reason, I I I think I'm also going to lean towards Kyle. I think Kyle um brings some new perspectives, some new ideas. I I think Pam is extremely involved with the Historical Association, and I think she is a tremendous value there. And I would hate to pull her off, and she's already doing so many different things. There's just a lot of work here with the Historical Preservation Commission. And um, I just think um based on looking at the other commissioners and what they bring to the table, and they already have a lot of history um behind them. I I think Kyle would just be just, it's just a a nice compliment to the existing commission. Um, so for that reason, I pick Kyle and Beatrice. And so that would conclude, so that would be um, let's see, I'll just repeat it to make sure I wrote these down correctly. So myself, Beatrice and Kyle, Vice Mayor Lau, Beatrice and Robert, Councilmember Ding, Beatrice and Robert, Councilmember Harrington, Beatrice and Kyle, and Councilmember Pooh, Beatrice and Kyle. So the two new commissioners would be um Beatrice Moharo and Kyle DeBrent. And so that concludes the appointments for tonight, and they will be brought back, let's see, at a future meeting Ju- June sixteenth for the final approval. And if I, is there anything else, Mark, that we have? Nope, okay. So uh, thank you to everyone who participated this evening, uh, to the candidates, to my colleagues. Uh, the next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, June second, twenty twenty, at six thirty P M. Meeting adjourned. Have a great evening, everybody. Good night.
Good night.